Very few other communities out there that can say that. Most of the wait times are between five and five days to two weeks. So we're very lucky that way. We have great access to physician services. And our wait times that they say that they want to reduce, we're already the best in the province. I can tell you that and our numbers can show it. We've been measuring this for the past seven years since we joined the primary care network. Also, our time to third next is one of the lowest in the province. That means what length of time does the third next appointment take to get into a seat of physician? It's a complicated formula, but that's the way the government's designed to measure how good we are at access. And we just happen to be very, very good. We basically see everybody who wants to be seen that day. If they book in the morning, they can usually get in that same day. And if they book in the afternoon, sometimes they even get in in the afternoon, but for sure in the next morning. That's called same-day access. That's what their province wants to achieve. That's what we've had over the last 18 years where I think we're not going to have any problems. So events access really is not an issue with Carson. Right now, if you were to ask my doctors, we don't have an access problem. We have an access supply problem right now. We have eight physicians where, about two years ago, we just had five. And we haven't grown. We're not seeing any more patients at the clinic than we did five years ago. So that's just the first point on this document that I addressed that is very misrepresented as far as we're concerned. And not a lot of thought has gone into these numbers to present it. I could go on. What else do you want me to talk about in this document?
Ron, maybe to help us get the perspective of the clinic and the physician, would it be possible for you to kind of write a document that outlines the disagreement that you have with that document and send it to us so that we can take a different perspective on it, which is a political voice to address those issues? Would that be possible?
Sure, that would be possible. You bet.
Because I questioned the numbers because I had heard that numbers didn't seem to be quite right. And it appears that, from what we were told, that someone had kind of tweaked the numbers after speaking with people at the clinic. So I don't really know how everything kind of unfolded. All I know that's what I heard, but we need to hear the perspective of the physicians in our town and of the clinic as a business model. Because that is something we must keep in our mind. It's a business model and you ought to operate it as such, not only just as a care provider with access from A to A, but as something that's viable and sustainable for the physicians in town.
Well, we can certainly do that. And it would take reams of paper to address all the issues of their experience in healthcare right now in the province because it's a complex problem that the province has. And I feel for them and it's a tough one to tackle. We have an unsustainable system right now. And we have a --
Ron, it seems like the government is addressing all clinics in the same manner. This regionalization thought, they look at Edmonton, they look at Calgary, and they say, "A, all the clinics are operated like that." I've lived in this community for 64 years. And in the 55 years that I've been going to that clinic by myself, I've never been waited longer than maybe 10, 15 minutes. So we have excellent services. Now, are they talking about expanding the clinic and bringing more doctors in? Are they talking about the long-term care at the hospital, expanding that? What are they talking about?
I don't know.
When we talk about primary care, our doctors are on it. But I'm just -- what concerns me more than that is I sit on the EMS committee along with Councilor Barnes, and we see all these transfers into Lethbridge when our hospital is equipped to handle a lot of that stuff, and yet we're not using it.
I was just talking to Dr. Clark today, and one of the things we have to worry about here is we don't want to have happen to us what happened in Coldale.
Right.
Where, why, they agreed to expand their services. They agreed to open up longer hours. And so they did reduce hospital usage and they lost it.
Yeah.
That's a concern. You never know quite know where they're coming from in these types of initiatives. I hate to say that about the situation, but that's my feeling.
If you were to accept more emergency-type visits, would that lower your patient per-hour rate? Like, if you had to deal with a lot of cuts, bruises, putting in stitches, assessing broken bones, things like that?
Well, if we expanded our service, you mean, if we extended our hours, I'm not sure of would or not. Yeah, we could probably see more patients. I mean, there is a certain amount of patients that go up to the hospital who seek treatment for non-acute things between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. There is a certain that don't quite make it into the clinic in time, and so they go to the hospital. It's a walk-in clinic, basically. And yeah, it's not the best way. Now, one of the plans in here is to, you know, co-location of a hospital and a clinic. That is the future of healthcare as far as our government is concerned. And I wouldn't disagree with that. That's part of a good plan. I mean, clinics that are doing that right now, Tabor, Pincha Creek, they -- it's a really good way of operation. And I could probably sell extended hours to my physicians if we didn't have to open up a building and bring more staff. Then it becomes viable financially for them. And so co-location, one of their second priority here, the building, the new hospital, has to come first.
Right.
One thing they found in Calgary with these walk-in clinics is the staff know all the people on a first-name basis, they're that often because they come in for hangnails, a split toenail. It's ridiculous, which all increases the costs and cuts down your efficiency. So I don't think walk-in clinics are doing any good for the amount of money they cost offering.
The root problem here goes further down. We have a system where everything's free.
Yeah.
And so it's obviously going to be abused when everything's free.
Yeah, I think if they charged $5 every time you went in, or $10, people would be a little more reluctant to go in.
That would help immensely. Sure. But, you know, as far as the overall plan, the picture of what they're trying to do, I wouldn't disagree with. I mean, they've got a lot of good ideas in there. Some of it, we would wholeheartedly leave it on board. You know, the, obviously, the new facility, the new hospital with the clinic located, that's something that we've been fighting for for a long time. The detox center, this is one area where the physicians are really in a loss, just the words and the patients that need detox and need addiction counseling. We just don't have it here in the community like we need it. We apparently have addiction counseling now at the mental health facility, but we need a lot, much more. The drug, we need the drug prevention. A lot of these ideas are good, you know? We would jump on board with them and say, "Great, we'll pay for it. We'll do what we can to do a better job." We were trying at the clinic in terms of prescription drug awareness. We had our first prescription drug education session today. Now, one of the things we want to do is to make sure that anyone who's on a narcotic for any length of period of time goes through this program of education, making them aware of what they're taking and why, and what it will do to them if they stay on for any length of time. So we hope to make that a steady and successful program in our clinic. Just the other day, we've been working out the process on it. I mean, Albert Health Services worked with us and sent people to help us design the program. So a lot of these things that they're talking about, we're already doing. We, the Carson Clinic was one of the first, three clinics in Southern Alberta to join the primary care network along with Pincha Creek, Tabor, and one of the first in the province, actually. And we've been doing this for, since 2005. So we have good experience with primary care and the initiative. And we've been doing all we can to support that initiative and doing what we can with the clinic to do all the kinds of chronic disease management that they want and do the preventative medicine that they want to do so that we can curb hospital usage.
And they recognize that at the minute, I must say. They were quite hopeful about all the good that the clinic is doing and speaking, I think, as spoken.
Yeah, I tell them they've mentioned their lifestyle program. We have dieticians, we have diabetes educators, we have, you know, we do a lot of nurse education within the clinic. And that's just expanded spirometry, you know, lung function, education, that sort of thing. So we're doing a lot, mainly because we've been involved with primary care for seven years now. Which, when I say primary care, I mean the initiative that the province started and helped fund us to do it. I mean, they're basically paying for some of our nurses to do this education. Has it had its bureaucratic nightmares a little bit sometimes, but we do. So yeah, a lot of this is good. The chronic disease management, you know, like I said, we can get on board that. We're already trying to do the best we can with the resources that we've got. Funding seems to be the issue of every priority. And so there's not a lot you can do with so many resources. We have a thousand diabetics in our patient population out of the 12,000 that have. And so we could be educating on diabetes till the end comes, you know? It just, it's endless what we can do, the work that we generate if we wanted. But we can only do so much. A lot of it has to come down to what we do as a community to help people become more self-motivated, take care of their own health. So what, in my personal opinion, can't speak for the doctors, but I think the provincial objectives are trying to plug a hole in a dam with a finger, you know? And just will not happen with the methodology that they're using in their country, the initiatives they're using. Telehealth, I'm not sure, you know, it's not a huge thing, but I'm sure some people could benefit from that. Chronic disease management, all these things are really good, you know? But it would have been nice, I guess, it would have been nice if we could have been at the table a little bit more. Say, "Okay, this is what we are doing. What do you want us to do? If it's not enough, tell us," you know? Because we're just doing what the primary care initiative is telling us to do. And believe me, they tell us what to do. They, you know, they control purse strings and they fund us, and as a result, we have to account for that funding. And every other week, I have a facilitator in my clinic meeting with us to make sure that we're doing the things that they want us to do. They've taken control of clinics in a lot of ways, which is scary.
You know, when I asked why the doctors were not at the table, we were told, "You guys are way too busy to take time off." So I asked, "Are you going to leave this with them and get their point of view also?" They'll say, "Yes, that's in the plan." But I'd be curious to know if it does happen.
Well, my understanding is that this is open for comment until sometime in March?
Yeah, I think till the end of, was it the end of March?
Yeah.
End of March?
And, yeah.
Do you or the doctors have an intention of making a formal comment towards this?
We've never even been formally given this by Albert Health.
That's surprising.
I snuck it over.
Well, this is why I asked specifically if you were going to be debriefed on a, whether they debriefed us. And they showed us the word. Didn't imagine.
Correct.
And maybe that'll happen.
Well, I hope it will happen. And I'll be glad to send a no to my partner, asking him.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting here. I think the appropriate course of action, the mayor has asked for a submission to council from the physicians in our community. And I think it would be appropriate for council to take that input and submit a formal comment to the appropriate authorities on this document because we were invited to the table. So I think it's appropriate that we make sure that we address that formally.
Yeah, we have to agree with that. Thank you.
My concern is with this plan, if you look back 20 or 30 years ago, the solution to medical problems was to put a hospital in every little hamlet around the province. After five years, they found out they weren't working. And if they put this into everywhere, it's going to be an even bigger disaster than what we had with the last great idea that they had.
My concern, and this is outside of the medical field, this is just my concern as a taxpayer, is, yes, we have an unsustainable system now, but from what I see, and what I see from the initiatives that are coming forward, and the family, the family care clinics, and all the initiatives that they're planning on, haven't helped us as taxpayers. We're already spending, what, $0.50 of every dollar in healthcare in the province. I'm not sure if that's correct, but 40 or 50%. This, just to give you an idea, her, Alison Redford's government wanted to implement 140 family care clinics. And I don't know if you know about those family care clinics or not, but they're a model of care that she designed without physician input again. And they are one-stop shopping, all in one roof, all under one roof, mental health therapists, physiotherapists, opuntress, physicians. Really good, sounds good in theory. They're all paid salaries. They're all government workers. They're all -- well, to give you an idea, I just heard a report when I was at a conference last month, for one of these family, there's three other problems right now under trial. We take care of about 12,000, 13,000 patients in our clinic. We do that with roughly 10 or 12, we can do it on 10 or 12 staff. This family care clinic that reported, they handled about 18,000 patients in their clinic, and they had 52 staff. Now, costs do not seem to be an issue with this government when it comes to healthcare. Costs are never brought to the table in any discussion that I've seen. And it just scares me to death as a taxpayer.
Thank you, Pat. Any other questions the council has? Thanks for taking the time, Matt. Appreciate it.
Maybe just in terms of a timeline, how much time do you think you need to kind of come up with something, a document? I'm just looking at it so that we can have the response before the audit line.
Sure. I'd like to give the doctors, because they haven't even read the ship. And I'd like them to have time to look at it. I'd like to get their input on it first before I write anything.
For the next five weeks, maybe?
Yeah.
Something like that, five weeks?
Certainly have something for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I just realized that as I was going through the agenda, I quickly skipped over the adoption of the last minutes.
Well, we won't go last. It's a good time to do it now.
Okay, good. Exactly what I was thinking. Ever had a chance to review the minutes from January 7?
Um, who did we adopt the minutes?
Any business arising from those minutes? Okay? New business, point A, this would be 7A on your -- this is in regards to finance and administration policy regarding professional development plan for councilor's policy. Yes?
I would say that, I would recommend that we accept this policy to be brought to council for approval.
Do we need motion, Pat? Is that a motion? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a note, and I know we're all aware of it, but although the timelines changed, the budget for the town didn't change a bit, so.
That's right.
Correct. Okay, all in favor? Bylaw policy B5 regarding bicycles lost or stolen and backyard security and backyard hands. Let's deal with policy B5 first. Basically, just an update of the current policy.
This is a new policy, Mr. Chairman? Do you want me to speak to it?
Would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a new policy that's being presented. Lloyd has been asked to deal with lost and stolen bikes on behalf of the RCMP to take a little bit of the burden off of their response to those kind of calls. And so with that being proposed, I felt that it was important that we had a policy in place as to how we were going to deal with those bicycles, how are we going to record them, and then how are we going to dispose of those that aren't claimed. Now, you can see from the policy, there's quite a few steps that we go through, including anyone who believes their bicycle has been stolen, that that file be submitted through the RCMP so that there's proper record of that. The biggest thing in here, I guess, is that we would hold those bicycles for a minimum of 45 days. And if those are unclaimed at that time, we will try to advertise the best we can that we found a bicycle or we have a bicycle in our possession in case someone is missing it. After the 45-day period has expired, though, we would donate those bicycles to the Carson District Handicap Association for them to dispose of and keep the sale, or the proceeds of the sale. So in a nutshell, that's the policy.
That's a good one.
So, first question, how bad is the burden of storing these bicycles? Like, do we get a huge accumulation, we have to just find a place for them, or?
We have had, and that's one of the concerns that we have, is where do we store them in a safe, secure location? We've been able to manage that. I won't tell you where they're secured at this point. Don't want any temptation, but we have managed to take care of that. But we've had a substantial, obviously depends on the time of year, but when Lloyd first took this over on their behalf, we had a substantial number that become a little bit difficult to find the appropriate storage space for.
So a follow-up question to that would be, you know, and I'm just thinking myself, I know I can go 45 days without going out to my shed to notice whether or not my bike's been stolen. So if during that whole time it's been gone and it's now donated and someone purchased it, and I see it going down the road by a legitimate buyer, I'm going to feel a little sheepish. So I'm wondering, how bad would the burden be on our storing of these bikes to extend this to 90 days? Because I think I would have tabs on my bike every 90 days, but maybe not so much 45. It's just a thought.
Not a ministry, you wouldn't?
Yeah.
As such to that, Marion, have we checked with legal, is 45 days long enough for us to store?
Yeah, we've looked into all of the ramifications of this. My initial reaction was, this is an RCMP issue and it puts us in a bit of a difficult position. But we made sure that the policy identified that if there's any indication that it's lost or stolen, or that it's stolen, sorry, that the RCMP are notified. So they have record of all of these, and most people, that's who they would report to, right, is the RCMP if they deem that they have a bicycle that is lost and misappropriated.
That's a great.
Yeah, just a question, over the years, I mean, we've found bicycles at times and turned them into the RCMP. I'm just wondering if this policy is reflecting that the town has assumed a greater role in the collection and managing of bicycles?
That assumption would be correct. And it really is because we were approached by the RCMP to see if Lloyd could assist them in this because, you know, they felt that there was, we talked about this earlier, with the lack of staffing here and the difficulty that they're having keeping up on all the things that they deem to be priority, that this was an area where we could potentially help them with that.
Any other questions?
One final, do you think 90 days would be?
We can manage whatever time limit she feels is appropriate. It just might mean that we have a few more bikes in storage over that period of time.
RCMPs keep the issue of time, right?
Put a chocolate bar out, that's what you'd ask for.
If council feels that 90 days is more appropriate, like I said, we do try to get information out to the public the best we can that we have found a bicycle and if it's, please check your storage.
I would go for 60 days, but 90 days, Bill, is just a little bit too long.
Can I ask you, Barnes? I'm just wondering, do you really want to take over the RCMP responsibility for connecting these bikes? Is it their responsibility? Part of the question is, it's not our fault that they're short-staffed. That's an inherent problem within the detachment with the RCMP. And maybe they need to be reminded that, you know, because they've got a problem, that they're trying to download their problems onto the town. It's going to cost us some money. And we're already paying them to do that job. So I don't know whether we're being premature to take this on or not, actually.
I would agree with a lot of your statements. That was a conversation that I had with Lloyd and with, in regards to this, when the initial request came, was where I felt more comfortable was that they would continue to keep the files. So really, our responsibility was just the collection and storage.
I don't have a problem with that part.
Which, that's what this policy aligns, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm a little more comfortable with that because I don't want us to get into a paper chase.
Right, exactly. Exactly. They do need to be RCMP files because otherwise they can't be, well, they should be RCMP files. Let me just.
Man, if I understand properly to address what Councilor Barnes is talking about, Lloyd finds a bike, puts it on the back of his truck, brings it to the storage, identifies the bike, sends the specs to the RCMP, and that's about the extent of the paperwork?
Correct.
Advertizes it on town social media?
Yeah, we advertise on social media, whatever.
I'm guessing we don't do the specifics.
And he would have the time to dispose of it. So yes.
We don't take pictures of it.
It does increase his workload in some ways, but to be honest with you, over the years, he is getting a lot of those calls saying, "Lloyd, we got a call. Can you go pick up this bike for us?" Like, and we assist in numerous ways, you know? He assists with traffic control or any of those kind of things when the RCMP call. So I just wanted to formalize our responsibilities and the RCMP's responsibilities by way of policy so that there was no question, I guess, as to who is responsible for that.
That's great.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll have something else, but I thought, well, I'll -- Uh, well, maybe, maybe I'll have a, something else, but, uh, I thought, well, I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion that we recommend this to council with, with the change that we increased the storage to sixty days. I think that, I think sixty days would be reasonable.
Yeah, I think so, too. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I just have one quick question while we're on the subject, and that is, do, do we have, maybe we, we could ask the RCMP to give a report just by way of notifying the public as to what maybe the most commonly stolen bikes are? Are they kids' bikes, are they dirt bikes, are they street bikes? And then people will know, hey, if you have a bike, bike that fits this kind of description, keep it maybe locked up? Or just know that that's the one that...
I would suggest that the RCMP would say you should keep all of your bikes locked up. I don't know that they, that they would... They've tried an education program about a lot of things, you know, about keeping your vehicles locked and keeping your belongings locked up. And I would say that more often than not, and, and I shouldn't speak on their behalf, but probably what is happening here is it is a, um, a crime of, of opportunity where it's laying on the front yard because a kid came in for supper and nobody bothered to put it away.
Just a quick comment, when my kids were growing up, my son had his bike stolen. We've got a kid downtown that stole it and quickly relinquished the bike, but that was a rare case. But at the same time, we mentioned it to the RCMP and he said that he had gone to a, a suspect's home checking on a bike because he thought that, that maybe somebody else's bike was at there. They found over twenty bikes at that one person's house. And of course, the grandpa didn't realize where all those bikes come from. Oh, that's kind of wild. But, you know, that's the thing, they're, they're, they are crimes of opportunity and oftentimes, these kids just see that and they don't think that, they, I want that bike too, but take them all.
The ones that wouldn't be crimes of opportunity would be immediately reported to the RCMP because, you know, it would be a break-in enter, whatever, right? So, most of the ones that we would collect, somebody will call and say, you know, I have a bike on my front lawn and it's been here for four days and I don't know who it belongs to. So, we go pick it up. It's not even necessarily someone reporting that they've lost it, right?
Okay, so we have a motion, all in favor? Just make that recommendation to council?
Sixty days, eh?
Sixty days, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, sixty days.
Forget it, Bill, you didn't have to look every day.
Sixty days.
Save you some extra work, hey? Okay, uh, the food security, uh, chicken issue here, so Council Creed, did you want to...
Sure, I, I made the request, uh, for this. Uh, as I indicated, this was, this was discussed with, with the last council in, in food security. And, uh, I thought at the time, I thought, you know, we're, we're rural people, we should get this. What I've discovered since is that it's because we're rural people, we don't get this because in many cities, uh, people are saying, yeah, food, food security, this, this, people have had hens. And with respect to Council Bentry's comments, uh, on, on his, uh, letter, that reflects exactly the rural attitude that we have as a people picture, a barnyard and all of the things that goes along with it, where backyard hens is, is, is much far removed from that. It's, uh, very responsible, we're not talking about a full coop of hens, we're talking about maybe a half a dozen, you know, what that, the most. And, uh, I've got some articles here from, uh, San Diego and, uh, where my daughter lives in, uh, Escondido, and, uh, they, oh, about a year ago, they embraced, uh, having backyard hens quite, quite enthusiastically. Uh, there were many presenters showing the benefits of it and, um, many cities throughout the United States. I think Utah, um, most of the cities in, in Utah always have allowed hens. The idea that, you know, that chickens are farm animals, uh, somehow we got that from the suburban idea of, of, uh, well, we can buy everything from the store now and we don't have to do it. But in, in cities in Europe, uh, many places, it's always been the case that people have, uh, have had hens. I, I, I put a letter on there, not, people maybe haven't had a chance to read it, uh, of advantages that, that it could be. And, uh, we're not advocating roosters at all. We're, we're just, you know, so, there's, there's not a noise, we don't have a noise issue. And, uh, many of the other, uh, arguments, I guess, are, you know, cons, I would say, are speculative. You know, until you actually, you actually try it, you don't know, you don't know if you're gonna have a, a problem. I would suspect that you won't, I've got, I say, I'm, I'm a little jealous, I've got daughters in Utah in, uh, West Vountiful and daughter in Escondido and they're, they're both enjoying their, their backyard hens. It's, it's great, the kids are enjoying it. When I do Skype with my daughter in Escondido, the kids will be carrying any hen and showing us their little chickens, enjoying it. But, uh, anyway, and, and I'm not totally representing this for myself in, when it was brought up before, there were numerous people in the community that were interested. I'll have to just say that they, they're basically invisible. I mean, you know, they'll, you, you can put six hens in the, in a, in a garden shed and nobody will know that they're there. You know, they're, they're quiet, they're easy. So, anyway, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to debate it. I'm not, you know, so, uh, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, accept what other people, but I, it's been on my mind for about two and a half years, so I'm loaded with arguments.
All right, Mayor Cronin?
Mr. Chairman, I understand Council Creed's desire to revisit our pets' policy to include chickens, hens. The background that we received represents two elements of the, of discussion. First, the exclusion of chicken as pets from our present policy, which is presented as discriminatory. Secondly, hens as a sustainable local source of food, a practice accepted in many urban areas in North America and other parts of the world. Here we are just now talking about pets like cats, dogs, and rabbits. We are talking about pets as a source of food, a little bit different. The keeping of hens would come under the broad umbrella of local food production, which was identified as a priority at the time of our strategic planning session. So, from a governance point of view, and because we are presently working on our strategic planning and fleshing out our priorities, one that will address local food production, I would recommend to council that we table this discussion for a later council. As you know, today, we will be reviewing our priorities. This will influence our policies. Some existing policies may need to be revisited, some others may need to be elaborated. Let us proceed in order, from strategies to specific goals to action plans that would include appropriate policies to achieve our goal. Therefore, I seek approval from council to table this item, not discard it, but table it and discuss it as part of our local food production priority item.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to table? What's, uh, any discussion on that?
Oh, so just, Mr. Chairman, uh, this has been brought up before? Uh, how many times before?
Pardon?
How many times has this been brought up before?
Well, only once since I've been on council it was brought up.
Two thousand and eleven.
You know, years, years ago, it was never an issue. I don't know which council, uh, effectively decided to demand it, but, uh, you know, it's, it's time to revisit it. It's, 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 uh, very popular, like I say, in, in many places. Uh, it hasn't been an issue, so, uh, I think it's time that we, we look at it, as, as Mayor Cronin said, as far, part of our, uh, our strategy for, for food security in the community. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy with their, uh, idea to table this and then discuss it as part of our, as part of our strategic planning.
As, as, as all the councillors are aware, I submitted a cons against backyard chickens. Uh, I'm very, uh, I'm very dedicated to this. And there's several reasons. Uh, in my, uh, in my campaigning, I heard chickens for backyards, but I heard more chickens against backyards. We're here to deal with the majority of, of the citizens of Cartston. And if we, if we do a, a motion to have chickens in the backyard and Richard Benry is against it and his neighbor has chickens in the backyard, is this council pitting neighbors against neighbors? Are they creating animosity in our community? Those are some of the ideas we have to worry about. Another thing is one of my points talk about diseases in, in chickens and ducks and fowl. And, uh, in, in the summation of my, of my cons, I said, let us be very wise and exercise caution in going forward with the issue of allowing chickens in the backyards of town residential yards. I feel that we need to promote farmers' markets where these types of food products are raised and grown by county farms and industry who are aware of all of the problems and dangers can have the ability and knowledge to maintain a safe and marketable product. That's a very serious statement.
Council Benry, if I might, I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying. The motion that we want to discuss here right now is whether or not we're gonna get into the depth of that discussion at a later date.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we just put it off and put it off and put it off and we don't come to a, to a head?
Well, I don't know that that's the case, given that in our, our strategic planning session, we did identify that this was an area that we wanted to discuss and to work out with as part of our priorities. Uh, my concern actually follows closely with Council Cronin's in the, uh, or my, sorry, Mayor Cronin's. I got the chair of the ship right now. Um, in that, in going into it now, maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves as far as where our planning is and making sure that we're putting our plan in place the way we want it. Uh, was there any other discussion anybody had regarding table?
Well, yeah, I, so my only question on the tabling was, uh, do we have a projected date as to when, for instance, the public who might be asking about this issue, when we can say, hey, we're gonna be discussing this in March, hey, we're gonna be discussing this in April?
So, so after our meeting today, we have our, some more priority planning?
Right.
So, until we have that initial stage done, I don't think we have a date?
Right.
But it would be in the, as, as part of that priority package, yeah?
I, I agree, I think that's...
And I'm sure when it gets to that point of when it's an actual discussion, I'm sure there'll be lots of advertising about it. The public will be aware that it's on, on the agenda.
I, if you may, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have submitted sixteen questions to all local vets that I will be glad to respond to and to give us a little bit more direction. And I think we cannot ignore the professional advice either. It should be part of the discussion.
So, on, on that basis, did anybody else have anything else that they wanted to, to comment on that, or can we call for it?
I was just gonna say, here, my understanding is it's not gonna, it's not every property is gonna qualify for chickens anyways. You're gonna have to have certain parameters...
Or want them.
Or want them at all.
Again, that, that would depend upon what we decided as a council to put into there. And so, again, I, I wanna take it back to, that's the details that we'll be working out through our priority. Uh, so I'd like to call the question on, on the motion that we have to table it. All in favor?
Okay. All right, seven C. So, we received a, uh, a letter from one of our citizens asking us to, uh, discuss specifically the fluoride. Does everybody have an opportunity to review?
I would, uh, looking at what, uh, Justin Scott wrote, I think it was very well written and addressed many different elements of the discussion or investigation that should take place regarding this item. It came to council in the past and never found traction. But I really believe that, um, I would like to see, to make a motion to recommend further investigation in the matter and to have a public consultation regarding this, this item.
I'd like to make that motion, myself.
Heard of that motion, I'd, I'd like to have our, uh, our water treatment supervisor involved in that discussion so that we know what's happening with our water and how much fluoride is putting in and so forth.
Okay, that's a good idea. So, uh, motion is to, uh...
So, motion of recommendation?
To recommendation that we further investigate this, yeah?
Well, if, if I may, just, uh, would it be wise to have, have that next month? I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, see if it'll be...
Could administration maybe give us a sense of how we should, uh, operate with a recommendation for further investigation?
Should it be handled first in committee of the whole?
Sure, I think that what we could do is, um, we would invite individuals with some expertise to the next committee of the whole meeting. Now, uh, whether that can happen or not, it'll depend on their availability, but I think by our committee of the whole meeting in March would be the appropriate time to start those discussions. It, it is an item, if you're looking at, um, some debate and some investigation into all sides of the issue, that it's best dealt with at the committee level. Um, and then perhaps council may deem that they want to go to some additional public forums to have some of that discussion as well. Thank you.
The, the, the writer of the letter indicates that there is a person who is an expert in this and says he would be doing it in April. I would suggest maybe we could do that in, in April and or, would that, would that wouldn't be putting it off too long?
Better CCW meeting in April or in March?
In, in April and then, and then maybe advertise it well and, and have people from both sides make presentations.
Yeah, it, it may be because it'll be, you know, there could be some fairly comprehensive, um, presentations and questions on behalf of council. So, this may be a number of committee meetings that we'll have to have representatives there to, to present all sides of it, right?
So, so with that, should we evitate administration's hands to be able to put that into, under our, our agenda?
I was gonna say, there, she says also in her letter, it is not necessary to have to wait that long. I mean, there are, there's another doctor, there's three people, but two of them are available anytime.
I really believe that in March, we could start the process and carry it on with seeing experts as they are available for us so that we can make a wise decision.
So, why don't we, with that motion, then, uh, make the recommendation to council and leave it in administration's hands as far as the scheduling and when experts can come to, to schedule that for, to be a place?
Can we put a timeframe when we can deal with this and, and end it? Like, if we start the discussion in April or March, I'd like to see it ended by July or August or something like that and just say, the policy is gonna come out, such and such, after we've had these public meetings?
I, I don't know that we can put...
Or we'll just keep on bailing it forward?
I, I agree with you that it would be nice to get whatever decision made, made, but I don't know that we can put a, a timeline on that this has to be dealt with by this date or that it is, or that it's the last one, because...
Three months in advance, we should be able to have...
So, we have, we have a motion on the table, uh, to make that recommendation to council and leave it into administration's hands of when to, uh, schedule it for us? In favor? Thank you. All right, uh, sir.
Just, uh, a suggestion that, that, uh, at the end of our, uh, agenda, there's a correspondence and it deals with the same thing. So, I would just recommend that, that we include that correspondence item as, as being... item as being dealt with, since it was on the same subject.
I would be fine with that. Parks and Recreation?
Oh, 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 sorry. This was the cleanup.
Right. So would you like to address that?
I'm sorry, I'm a little behind you here.
Sorry, Mayor, I thought you were talking to me when you said that.
I thought you said Parks and Recreation. No, that's not me. But no, in the Communities in Bloom Committee meeting, we talked about a community cleanup, which we discussed briefly at the last council meeting, but then we suggested that we bring it up to discuss it further. So this is the...
The further discussion?
This is the further discussion that we have on the cleanup. And I think the Communities in Bloom would, I will be bold enough to say that we would help organize, you know, the involvement, you know, community involvement in that cleanup. We would just need the support of the town crews. And I guess discussing a date, if we was to do that, that would be possibly when we already kind of do have a town cleanup week, and that we could just enhance that with, you know, some volunteer community cleanup efforts at the same time. So if council is in favor of that idea, I will make that recommendation.
Did anybody else have anything else they wanted to comment?
Well, I just wanted to add, I constantly, it seemed to me that the committee had tasked Randy Russell to try to determine areas where TLC was needed in town. And he was going to do that for us, and then from there on, we were going to decide on the sources.
One thought, and maybe it's already part of the plan, but I'm wondering if we couldn't have a little task force addressing any graffiti on that day as well, so we could go around...
Yeah. It's all part of the road picture.
Although the graffiti recommendations is that you get on top of graffiti immediately, you don't wait, you know, for the future.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm just thinking, anything that's still around on that day, that's the day we do it.
Well, we could, you know, get us started on it anyway.
Ask if there's volunteers, if we happen to have any that needs to be taken care of.
That's an idea.
Just a caution on the graffiti. If it is town-owned property, we have a policy and we've directed staff to get on it immediately. If it's on private property, we'll have to have permission before you send volunteers in. So it takes quite a bit of coordination, just as a heads up.
And we actually surprisingly have had some issues with private property. People aren't willing to actually have to deal with it, so.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up is because if we are going to tackle graffiti that day, it needs to be addressed before that day, getting the permissions, getting the color matching and whatever we need to do.
Counselor Benjery?
Community cleanup, can you just enlighten us a little bit more, Counselor Creed, on what's expected there and what kind of properties are we going to be cleaning up? Are we going to be identifying certain individual properties and saying, hey, your property is not the size? Is this public property?
Public town, town-owned property, as Mayor Cronin indicated, the Communities in Bloom asked Randy Russell to try and identify some areas that could be potential areas where we could get volunteers to address on that day and make it a community effort.
Like the creek?
Like the creek or the lion's park or Main Street or...
Sunset Park.
Or, you know, the tot lot, you know, anywhere that maybe has a need or there's a need, that we could bring people in, try to build a little pride in our community.
So Communities in Bloom would be heading this up?
I'm going to put my neck out there and say, yeah.
Mayor Cronin, you had something you wanted to...
Well, I also remember last year where there were some neighborhood kind of cleanup, which were organized by the church on the west side, and there was some that happened on the east side in Six World. I think if we all coordinate our effort together, we might have within a day, something that looks pretty pretty and pretty spring-looking and inviting for the summer season, the tourist season.
No. Whenever they do the Moses Lake cleanup, I know every ward is on board with people, and I'm sure if we did a community thing, that it'd be the same result. I'm sure that Bishop Brick would get out there and encourage members to get involved, and we could have a very successful day or two doing it.
Counselor Evans?
I have a problem with them getting involved with graffiti removal. Graffiti removal is an expensive proposition. In Calgary, they decided that they would do it on a city basis, and their budget has escalated every year. So I think, once you set the precedent of going around and cleaning it off and removing the responsibility from the property owner, you're going to create some problems for us.
Well, I don't know that the idea was for us to use material, no money from the town to do that. I think each business would have to at least take care of that aspect.
But they should have done that already. The plan is remove it immediately.
Yes. There are many points regarding that, and it has to be discussed.
I agree with you that that could become a very expensive thing, especially if the town...
It was never intended to do that.
For the town to be...
Our budget is very limited in probability.
Because in some cases, it means renting sandblasters to clean up bricks and things like that. And I don't think that's part of a cleanup. Cleanup is cleanup.
That's not what we intended.
Counselor Pivoy, you had something you wanted to add there?
Well, I was just going to ask about the specifics of previous cleanups. Have we had the ecclesiastical collaboration? Have we...
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. It can happen. My thoughts are that in some of the things from our community survey, there were several people that suggested that we need to have things that are town-sponsored, not church-sponsored. And we can invite all of the churches, you know, participate. They are part of the groups in town, but we should not try to make it a church, you know, sponsored or a church event. I think it needs to be a community event that would be for the whole community.
Counselor Pivoy, to answer your question directly, there never was, per se, in the past three years that I have been in council, a town cleanup directed from a town committee. We've done that for Moses Lake cleanup, but we never done it for our town. So the focus is shifting a little. Doesn't mean that the other might not happen. It just means that this is a focus that we identified as an area of interest in the communities and in the service we have.
So do...
I just want to, to be clear, the town has not been the driving force behind the Moses Lake cleanup as well. We just simply participate with manpower and equipment. That has been actually organized by the LDS church. But at that time, during the Moses Lake cleanup, we have had community cleanup organized by the church within the boundaries of the town as well, in particular, the creek bed and the long area, on the same day. So there has been some, but it hasn't been, as the mayor said, organized by the town.
But one doesn't exclude the other.
Do we need a motion for a recommendation to council for this, or...
My understanding is that the Communities in Bloom is going to spearhead this?
Yeah.
So I think it's just a matter of the councillor going back to the committee and saying, you know, I've got supportive counsel to move forward with this, and then come back with more specifics and then have a formal motion.
I asked Mayor, is there a date that the town has, you know, is our, we have a cleanup week where the town will pick up, you know, additional items? Do you know what the date is?
We normally do that between mid to end of May. We were just talking about, we'll get a date set and we'll let you know what that date is.
Don't allow any late snows on them.
Yeah. You know, it never fails, whatever date we set it for, we'll be doing it the next week because it snows. But I'm sure one thing to keep in mind this year is with the pool project, our public works and our Parks and Recreation staff will be heavily engaged in finalizing that project. So we're going to have to keep that in mind as well if we're talking about having the town staff or equipment available for this cleanup. So it's something just to keep in mind.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, if it's during the week that we are already doing that, it might be something that's already on their priority list or...
We may have to bump it a little later, though, to accommodate the pool project. We'll just have to, we'll talk with our staff and see what the best date is, and then we'll let you know, council.
So I think you go back on what the council's supportive of, Lieutenant General.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. I don't believe we have, unless there's something that's added afterwards, any confidential items? Well, we need to go to the other...
So we are... Oh, sorry, I almost missed here again, Mayor.
Okay. Let's...
On the front of you, you may have a letter to citizen. I had forwarded that earlier on to Counselor Barfus a while back when he was writing his other report, but it was so lengthy that we could really incorporate the report from the RCMP. I really thought that it is an important piece of information that the public should know something about. It deals with what we talked about, the offenses, it talked about the graffiti, it talked about the really upcoming transfer of our corporal to Manitoba, leaving the detachment even shorter, and the need for us as a sideline to meet with them, since we have a ad hoc committee that has been struck, to make sure that it's not gone before we do that. So I really thought it could inform the public as to what the RCMP is doing, and that they're aware of what's going on and really mindful of the safety and security of our town. So I just wanted to know if you felt it was a useful piece of information that should be published and could be published under Counselor Barfus' name. Makes no difference to me. It's just because there was so much on the agenda last time, the report can be two-page long and it was just too much.
Counselor Benjery?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have against this letter, Mayor, is I'd like to strike number three. That might not be for public information at this point in time. A lot of times, people don't like that kind of information getting out. So I'd just like to strike it. I mean, if they're watching TV, they know it now and so forth, but I don't think that should be advertised in that better.
I would take it one step further. I would say, as lovely as this is...
Oh, you can comment. It doesn't bother me.
Yeah, it's just for my perspective.
She's got fixed hair.
Yeah. Thinking as a citizen...
Just why run it forward?
It's just, yeah, it's just a bit wordy. What I would love to see is, you know, hey, the RCMP recommends the following, and then bullet, 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 done. It's just a thought. It's...
Counselor Barnes?
I'm kind of a wordy person. I really like it the way you do it.
It's very nice.
But I like to have, I agree with the counsel of Benjery.
We can strike a compromise somewhere.
But I have a concern that we're already short-staffed, and I don't think we need to let people out there know that it's even going to be more, if it happens that quickly.
But don't you think that would be then a way to let the citizens know? Be careful.
Maybe it's a good time to advertise for more people to help with Citizens on Patrol. That'd be a good way to help.
Mayor, did you have something you wanted to...
No, I...
Okay. You just looked like you had that locked, so I just wanted to...
I did want to make one more comment. I think that this would tag on to your letter very nicely, and I think we should put it on the website.
Okay. So let's try to deal with numbers.
Can we just talk for a second here? Counselor Evans had something to add in here, so.
Informing the citizens that they're short-staffed is also informing all the criminals in the area that they're short-staffed. And this is a great time to break into your house.
You have a super good point. So you have a very good point. So let's take...
I think we take your letter, critique it, in the areas that Corporal Brown suggested that we need to put motion sensor lights up, lock our doors, you know, bullet form like Counselor Pivoy said, and not suggest we're short-staffed, not suggest how long we're going to be short-staffed and so forth. I like Counselor Evans.
Yeah. You know, you have a good point. It's true. Maybe I'm a little naive.
So perhaps maybe we could do with this letter what you and I did with my letter.
You know, sometimes I am fair game because that's a whole notion of improving your product, right?
Absolutely.
So why don't we start...
Also, before, that could be yours.
I'd be happy to abbreviate.
You know, sometimes. That'd be your task, over.
I'd be happy to do that. That's fine.
Good. I'll send you the, well, yeah.
I will, I can forward it.
Could you forward it?
I'll send it out to all of council.
So, yeah, so if we could get an email chain going with that, and then we'll just, anybody that has anything to add on to it, then. Timeframe-wise, what were we thinking? We wanted to get this published by?
Sooner the better.
Soon, that's what I think. So we have a deadline of Tuesday if we wanted to get into next week's papers, so.
I would suggest you have a deadline of Friday if we want to get it into next week's paper.
This Friday.
So that I can have it and...
Yes.
Yes, by Tuesday.
Thank you.
Great idea. So Friday then, so when you get these emails, let's respond quickly and put that to best.
Well, thank you. You're good.
I have one situation I need to make you aware of. On the 24th of February, I have a recreation, a Parks and Recreation meeting at four o'clock here, and I also have a library board meeting at the same time, at five o'clock, which I can't make it to both. So I was just going to ask, since Mayor's...
I will...
Ex officio, member of every committee, do you like to attend one?
The 24th is a Monday?
Yeah. My preference would be for me to attend the library board because I'm more familiar there.
And which is the other one?
Is the Parks and Recreation. It'll be at four o'clock here.
Is that just a one-time thing, or is that...
No, no, it's just one time.
You don't have a green thing?
Usually we have our, our meeting is usually the week before, but it becomes, it's family day, so they put it off.
No, it's fine. I'll be there.
So you go to the Parks and Recreation here at four o'clock on the 24th?
Yeah, but send me, send me the agenda, the background or whatever.
Soon as Tara gets it to me.
I'll let the staff know and make sure that you're...
Yeah, have Tara just send one off. That would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem.
And with that, I'm looking for...
Might have one.
Possibly. And this is, Mayor, before the meeting, you were checking on possible transportation of that Brown Day Seminar, and all of the councillors weren't here at that time. Do we want to talk about it now, or do you want to talk about that after?
It can be after the meeting. It's fine. It doesn't need to be on record.
Okay. Okay. I'll make your motion.
Thank you very much. We will return.
Thank you.
We have, for those of you who've seen, the planning to take the Browns...
Thank you for coming out. We're always happy to see members from the community over.